We're with Fritz Moore, who is running for Sandpoint City Council. The vote is coming up on November 2nd, and let's get to know him a little bit. All right. Hello Fritz, how are you today?
I'm good, thank you. How are you?
I am great. What made you decide to run for city council?
Well, that's the million dollar question, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
So, it's kind of twofold, honestly. One was, I was encouraged by many residents of Sandpoint to run. I feel that there is a burgeoning dissatisfaction with the direction of the city, but also dissatisfaction with the direction of the country in general. So, I think a lot of people believe that city council, in many ways, is somewhat of a last line of defense, not just a space for city planning, but a space to hold the basic ideology of the denizens of the city. And admittedly, I feel, you know, I know that some people get put off by this idea, but I first look at myself as a man of God. I'm very, very, very active in my personal relationship with my higher power. And so, when I receive intuitive messages, or you know, sometimes through other people, because you know, God speaks to us in many different ways, I try to heed those messages. And though I had been pushed by several people to run, I kept asking myself these questions. Am I the right person? Is this the right time for me? Are these things that need to be said, do they need to be said right now? And do they need to be said and done by me? And I kept asking those questions. I also was going to find myself out of town during the registration period, and I was at a wedding in Indiana with my wife and children. And on the way home, we drove out to Indiana, just to have a nice road trip cross-country, which of course, you know, it's a beautiful country out there. My last night, coming back, I had been thinking about these things, and I still was very undecided at that moment. Again, is it me? Do I need to say it? You know, is this the time? And I got multiple messages from different people within the city, within minutes of each other, and these are people that don't know each other, asking me to run. And so, there was one day left to register. I got home at 10:30 at night, after watching the sunset on the Flathead River on the way home on 200, which was, you know, again, God's grace, right? Get home, and I sit on my patio, and I look at everything that needs to be done, and I have one day to do it, which, you know, is possible, but there was a lot of things that needed to be taken care of and put in place. And so, I made an agreement with my higher power, with God. I'm gonna do and take the correct action, and I'm gonna do this, because if this is really what I'm supposed to be doing, if this is the direction I need to be moving in, then I'm gonna trust in that, and I'm gonna take care of this worldly event, the declaration, all these other things, that I need to go and do in one day, and take care of all that. And if you really want me to do this, you're gonna provide what I need, and it's gonna get taken care of. And I gotta tell ya, that day was one of the smoothest days of my life, truly. And I got three times the amount of signatures that I needed, and at least that many people who said they wished they could vote for me if they were still in the city limit. So, that was a big sign for me, that this was the right direction. Again, I'm not a politician, never have been.
What is your background, Fritz?
So, well, I was raised in Phoenix, Arizona, so I got that desert grit, that's part of it. I left there about 26 years ago, and I've been sort of up and down the west coast primarily. I lived in LA, and I worked in Hollywood for a long time.
Oh, I am so sorry.
Me too. But you know, what's interesting is, you know, growing up, when I went to college, and I, you know, first went to college for theater, and I was very active in the theatrical community, and that was my background, and I was an actor and a director, and starting to write and things like that, so a very creative kind of background. But I found myself at odds a lot of times, you know, within that world. And so, I, but nonetheless, you know, I think that many of us have felt this sort of calling from the ego, right? I have to be something. I have to be extraordinary, right? So Hollywood was a calling. So when I left Phoenix, I went to Seattle. And, yeah, exactly. I didn't go to Hollywood, I went to Seattle. But in Seattle, I had huge growth experience, as far as, you know, personal identity experience. It's really where I started to kind of really build my personal spiritual relationships. And, and yet, I got to a certain glass ceiling there professionally, and you know, the only other place to really take it was to go down to LA and go to Hollywood and actually see what I could do. Got down there, within a year, I had a very high-paying job. I was running a team of post-production people, and working on some very high-profile projects. But all of a sudden, you know, my ego was really lubricated with all that money, and you know, sort of prestige, if you will, even though I wasn't anywhere close to what I wanted to be doing. And the more I was in that position, the more I felt crushed by it. And I finally decided, I can't do this anymore, and unfortunately, as it does for so many people, it cost me my first marriage. And we, she took my daughters to Seattle, and I followed, and I wanted to be close to my kids, but I also really, at that point, had had it with the whole entertainment industry. So, instead, I decided to open a yoga studio and teach meditation, and be barefoot for several years, and hid out in there.
Okay, let's speed this one up, because you're bringing up several questions here.
Sure. Yeah, so, you know, that said, I got remarried, and Seattle just wasn't home, and so, we hit the road. We bought, we got rid of everything, and we bought an RV, and we started traveling. We traveled the United States for a few years. That's how we came through Sandpoint, found Sandpoint, and decided that Sandpoint was gonna be our home, and we now have our first child that was born here, and he's seven.
When did you make it to Sandpoint?
So, we moved here a little over a year ago.
Okay. And you have an infant?
I do, I have a seven-year-old, and a four-year-old. I've been a stay-at-home dad for the last four years, stayed home, and we've been traveling, but...
Sure.
But my wife is a nurse, and she actually does coordinating, so she works remotely. So she's basically working all day, and I'm taking care of the kids, so...
Okay. Well, you've brought up several contradictions, so I'm going to, now, I know that the city council is supposed to be nonpartisan.
Sure.
We know better.
Yep.
We absolutely know better. You have indicated a good, God-fearing Christian generally is right-leaning. You also have spent many years in the left-leaning areas, such as California and Seattle and such like that. It's a conundrum. Why don't you tell us a little bit about how you, you know, how you lean, or how you will lean, if you're on city council?
Well, let me say this. Every officer of the government, city council member, up to the governor, up to the president, swears an oath of office. What is that oath? That oath is to uphold the Constitution of the United States, and in this particular case, the Constitution of the state of Idaho. There are particular lines of law in there that, in my estimation, are not being followed. Just go to Article 1, Section 1, "The Inalienable Rights of Man." There's so many issues that are at play. One of my major issues is liberty. What does liberty mean? You know, there was a, NBC put out a thought experiment in one of their articles, and that's what they call these series of articles, a thought experiment. And the person writing the article was suggesting that liberty wasn't really what we thought it was. It wasn't actually freedom, it was a type of freedom.
A type of freedom?
A type of freedom. So, I did a little YouTube video on this.
That was NBC?
It was NBC, yeah. NBC Universal, you know, massive consolidation company. So, I actually did a little YouTube video on this, where I broke down what exactly liberty meant, and I used Black's Law Dictionary to define it, you know, the dictionary that legal people use. And it essentially completely negated their entire argument. But that's what's going on in our culture and in our governance. They're putting forth these ideas, suggesting that the power is vested in them to do certain things that are literally repugnant to the actual law, and then telling us in the same breath that they can't do any things to protect us from those repugnancies, because they don't have the authority to do so. It's a very interesting dance that's taking place right now. For me, I start to realize that I'm not left or right, I'm not red or blue, I'm a free man, and there are God-given rights, God-given. When I hear somebody, like a commissioner of the county, suggest that God is not important to put into a resolution, and they roll their eyes at a constituent...
I was there, I appreciated that one being pointed out.
Yeah, that's, that is, that's derelict in your duty. "In God We Trust" is not a slogan, it is codified in our laws, period. Now, you wanna worship the Christian God, that's your prerogative. You wanna worship the idea that God is the universe, that's your prerogative. If you wanna believe in the quantum physics idea of a unified field, and that is the source energy, and that is an intelligence, that is your prerogative. God is not enumerated within the constitutional laws of this country as specific to any one ideology. It is the Almighty God. How you perceive that and interpret that, that's your free will, and your ability to free-think. That's what I feel like is being taken away from us. Now, people are gonna say to me, "Well, what does that have to do with city council?" That has everything to do with city council. I have a right to life and liberty, so I have a right to not be tracked everywhere I go. I have a right to not be surveilled when I'm parked in a free parking spot, free, and yet I'm going into a database and plugged in. How long I'm there, the time, it is my car, my license plate. Why is this massive data collection taking place, when I have a right to life and liberty? That's freedom. I have a right to move freely.
Okay, let's look at some specific issues for city council.
Sure.
Okay. A couple of years ago, there was a big issue between the city and the other side, over the Second Amendment, with the festival at Sandpoint. Do you know what I'm referring to?
I think I've heard some things about it, yes.
There was a lawsuit, and the city, you know, took the stance that the people at the festival can ban firearms. So, do you, are we up to date here?
Yes, so, what's the question?
The question is, what was your take on that situation?
Well, I'm, first of all, a huge proponent of the Second Amendment, absolutely. I was raised by a man who, you know, had me enrolled in the NRA before I even knew what the NRA was. He taught me how to use firearms properly and respectfully, and, you know, I passed those, passed those things on to my own children. Guns don't hurt people, it's people who hurt people. What I see in this city is law-abiding citizens going about exercising their right. I see people at the playground with a weapon on their hip. Do I feel like that's necessary? Maybe not, but maybe they do. Do I feel threatened by that? Absolutely not. The people who are exercising their rights are not the problem, right? The problem is, when we take away those rights, then we start to see the real problem. And a perfect example of that is, you know, look at some of the countries where they've removed all the weapons from the people, Australia, New Zealand, you know, we're watching some real terrifying authoritarianism going on. Well, that'll happen here in America too, if we allow them to take away our right to protect ourselves. Now, the festival itself, if the festival is on private property, if the festival is being housed by a private entity, and that entity chooses to restrict somebody's ability to bring in firearms, I suppose that there's an argument there. I would actually have to hear the whole argument before I would have to take a side on that.
The problem being, is they were renting property from the city, I think, weren't they, Brett?
So, and there's that, you know, if it is a city property, then the city has the, the city has to enforce the law. And the law states, again, the Idaho Constitution, right?
Well, that one did, that one did.
Article 1, Section 1, literally states that we have the right to defend and protect ourselves at all times, not whether I'm at a festival or not.
I will move on from that, since you weren't here during that.
I was not, yeah.
But you should probably get yourself up to speed on that one.
Yeah, I've heard about it.
It's been a big issue.
Yeah, I can imagine. Well, this is a, you know...
You can learn a lot of that on Read Out News.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll check that out. You know, growing up in Phoenix, you know, it was a pretty common thing, and then they tried to remove the firearms from people, you know, it was used to be an open carry, and then they went back to open carry. So, almost everybody I know there now open carries, and that was really just in Phoenix proper, you know, some of the outer-lined areas, like Winslow or something like that, you could always open carry. So I've grown up around that, you know, guns don't frighten me, it's people with the wrong ideas with guns frighten me. Well, I'd rather, you know, honestly, in that situation, I'd rather have a gun, because...
Well, there are a lot of people that take the stance that they never would've carried if they hadn't been told they couldn't.
Yeah, yeah.
You know?
And now, suddenly, you have to make a stand.
That's right, they have to make a decision.
And I think that, you know, we're seeing that on so many different fronts, right now, just beyond the Second Amendment, you know, the First Amendment, free speech, exercise of religious rights, you know, the freedom to assemble, all of these things are under attack on every level, and that includes on the city level.
Well, they say that all politics are local.
Yeah.
And that is true.
Yeah.
It's absolutely true, it's gotta start here.
But local action has national impact, as some would say, so...
Yes, it does. That's why it's got to start here.
Yeah, agree.
Moving on, let's talk about the current discussions on mandates, be it masks or vaccines. You say your wife is a nurse, I'm sure she has to deal with it on a daily basis.
She's in the fight of her life right now for refusing the vaccine.
Has she? Excellent. Well, I guess I shouldn't say excellent. But I appreciate the fact that she's fighting for that.
Well, essentially, she has been told that if she does not comply, she is willingly resigning from her post.
She's been told to willingly resign?
Yes, and so, the facility that she works for is in Bellevue, Washington. She's not in the clinic, and she does not deal with anybody face-to-face or in-person, she has been working remote for two years. So, their reasoning was, she's on the payroll, that's why she needs to do it. So, we refused, then they said, "Well, you can take an exemption," and then we said, "Well, if you take an exemption, then that means that you're telling, I'm telling you, this is a tacit, this is what they call a tacit agreement to a contract. I'm telling you that I agree that you have the right and authority to even ask me for an exemption, and then therefore have the right to then take it away and force me to take the shot. So I'm going to tell you, no. What I would like you to do is provide proof of claim, that first of all, that there is a law that authorizes you to have, to supersede my bodily integrity. So please, provide that first. Then I would like you to provide me with all of the peer-reviewed clinical trials that show both the benefits and the adverse events possible with this emergency-use vaccine, and on top of that, thirdly, I'd like you to provide me a list of all the ingredients unredacted." How many of those do you think they provided?
Probably none.
Goose egg, that's correct.
But she is still in the fight.
Well, up until a couple of weeks from now, where she's supposedly willfully resigning.
Right.
So, we said that this is a coercion, that this is coercion, this is wrongful termination, that they're causing duress. See, all these are legal terms that we're using, because that's the truth. She's not resigning. They're wrongfully terminating her, based on a dictate from somebody who has no authority to make such a mandate, so...
Absolutely.
I mean, I can go more into the mandates and where I stand on that, if you want that.
Well, well, think about that one, let's get a couple of other topics covered first, just because they are very important, local topics. Let's talk about the 1% sales tax that's supposed to have gone away. If I understand it correctly, they're not going to get rid of this temporary tax.
No.
Can you tell me how, your stance on this one, and what you will do for the people in Sandpoint?
Well, let's look at it this way, at the basis, because this is what they don't wanna talk about with everybody. Sandpoint, Bonner County, and Idaho State as a whole is a welfare state, okay? And every dollar that we receive from the feds comes with what? Conditions. Okay? So, what the city of Sandpoint is trying to do right now is go, "Hey, guys, come on, come out to this beautiful place, and this is what we're gonna do, and we're gonna make it look all beautiful and sweet for you guys, and this sidewalk is gonna feel so good, and this park is beautiful." Let me tell you what, that park is already beautiful, okay? It's already beautiful. This town is beautiful. Wasting our time on beautification projects and not dealing with infrastructure issues that are decrepit and literally causing problems is just a fool's errand. So, what you're saying to me is, is that you, the city of Sandpoint, is gonna dip into this pocket, so that you can raise enough funds here, so that the federal, the federal guys can come over and dip into this pocket, and then you can get some of that money along with their caveats and how you're gonna spend it. That's the thing they don't wanna talk about, right? That's the elephant in the room. So essentially, I feel like I'm being lied to. I'm being, I'm being snow-jobbed with the idea that this tax is gonna be good for every, and oh, by the way, 85 cents on every dollar is going to be raised from people from out of town. No, actually, what's gonna happen is, the people who can afford it the least are the ones that are gonna get hit hardest. They already can't afford a place to live, they already can't afford the grocery bill that's ever increasing due to an inflationary economy. Nobody's dealing with the real issues. It's all putting lipstick on a pig. So taxing people more is not the right answer, with one caveat, unless we're going to address the real issues, which have yet to be addressed, even though the tax that's already been in place is about to sunset. So, kicking the can down the road, talking about building and increase bureaucracy by regionalization, making people who are not responsible for the mess that we're in pay for it, so that we can get some nicer grass and a skating rink at the park? Nah, you're not, I'm not sold. I'm not sold. I think we need to put a pause on all these plans, and start focusing on what's necessary for the city. Because you cannot build a solid house on a faulty foundation, but that's what they're trying to do. They want us to ignore the real problems while they focus on things that, on their face, sound great, but in the long term, they don't live up to the promise. So, why is that? Again, I have to do this in order to get this. And they said that, they told you that. We're rushing this right now, we have to do this, because we wanna make sure that we get some of those infrastructure funds, which by the way, are backed by nothing, right? So you want us to take more of the national debt that's backed by nothing in order to fund our city, because we have a lack of innovation and a lack of foresight to deal with the things that we need to be dealing with right now.
Are they still talking about their light-up sidewalks?
Yes, I mean, I, yes, yes. So, you know, I don't wanna, you know, that probably sounds a bit like an attack, and I don't wanna attack anybody, but I feel a lot of this attitude of like, patting us on the head and saying, "Don't worry, we know best, trust us." I'm sorry. Transparency is what brings trust, okay? And when you are transparent, and you live up to your promises, and you do what you're said, that brings trust. People do not trust you right now, even though you're demanding it, and because you can say the slogans, and make all the talking points, and point to all the flowery expletives and beautiful things that we want out there, doesn't mean that you know what you're doing, doesn't mean that you've got the right plan in place. We've got to think outside the box, we're not doing that. We're living inside of a box, and that's not helping anybody. But that box was not really created by us, it's created by outside forces, right? These outside forces keep coming back into the city. So, what I was saying is, like, we've got these outside forces that everybody's looking to, to design our city. We're not tapping into the human capital that we have here. We're not tapping into the innovation and the ideas that we have here. We've got a massive service economy, and yet we wanna grow. Well, you can't grow a service economy. Service economy will always fail if there's nothing to service, right? So, we need to have both a producing economy, as well as a service economy, as well as a multifaceted aspect economy, that is, allowing Sandpoint to come up and have independence. We have everything we need here to create that kind of independence, we're just not thinking about it in those terms. Why? Because we have been, how do I put this? The narrative is, we have to receive from the outside in order to do what we need to do here. We're not literally going down into the soil, right? We're not getting dirty in the soil and helping these people be innovative. There are so many people I talk to in this town, left, right, I don't care what side you're on, that have innovative ideas that are falling on deaf ears, because it's not part of the plan. Well, plan's not working for anybody. High-density living, let's think about that, housing, high-density living. What happens when something becomes high-density in your body? What happens? Cancer, right? It dies. What happens when you clog main arteries in your body? What happens? You have a heart attack. So here's why I got two plans coming out of the city. I got cancer for the downtown corridor, and I got a heart attack on main arteries. That's their plans. And where'd all those plans come from? Oh, we hired this outside firm to come in and tell us how to develop, right? We're not turning to the resources we have here to develop, but I'll tell you, there is a desperation, almost a desperation, in the voices and the people of this town and this county, that want to be the resource of those ideas, desperately, and they're being pushed aside. So one asked a question, if they're being pushed aside, why? Why are they being pushed aside? Why are those voices not being heard? Why are they not being received? Don't worry, just trust us.
So, do you have a plan to bring jobs into the area?
Well, obviously...
Or at least ideas to present?
Obviously, this is a very complicated subject. And do I have perfect ideas? I don't. And quite frankly, at this moment, I'm in the process of working with people to formulate those initiatives. What can best serve these communities? How do we do this? I look at something like, say, Evans Brothers Coffee, all right? It's a small shop, but Evans Brothers is not only a service economy, it's a producing economy, right? It is something that not only produces its product to sell, but it now sells its product in various places, all the way down to Quarter Lane, all the way up to Bonner County, right? As well as just having its little shop here, creating jobs and service here. We need to innovate in that kind of, that kind of methodology. There's a, there's a Orcas Island, you ever heard of Orcas Island and the San Juan Islands in Washington State, right? So there's this, there's this little farm there, that they do all organic farming, but it's all farm-to-table. So the restaurant serves the food that they farm, and the excess that they farm gets sold off to these other places, right? We're not supporting our farmers here, right? We're saying, "Oh, you need to go to the feds to get subsidized by the feds, because, you know, they're the ones with all the money, even though the money's fiat," right? They're the ones who've got it. So we don't support our farmers, we're letting massive conglomerates come in here and buy up all of our land, right? So even though it says, as a right of every equal individual, as a right to own and to acquire and possess property, we've now been priced out. There are some that say, including people on my team, very smart people, very smart people, that it's, well, it's all based in, you know, this free-market economy, it's a supply issue. Well, yes, on the surface it is, but, I mean, sure, you and I are old enough to go back and remember the crisis that some of these people are forgetting about, and how we got there. My father's been a real estate appraiser my entire life, so over a five-year period, when I watch home prices increase by 60%, something that's never been seen before in the history of the market, and then the economy pop, we give them all of our tax money while we take on the burden of that, yet that market got to stay right where it got inflated to, and now we can just go, "Oh, it's market issues, it's driving home prices." But don't worry, don't worry, you'll be satisfied with 600 square feet for you and your family, with two walls butting up against somebody else, because that's just the new way to do it. Yeah, maybe in China, but that's not the American dream. Now, how do we, how do we address those issues here? That's a good question. That's a very deep rabbit hole question, because we're not actually addressing issues that are just Sandpoint local, right? issues that are just Sandpoint local, right? But if we're only looking at the surface, then we're just gonna keep floundering inside the machine, if you will, right? This, these bad policies that continue to be put forth. Now, what's the right decision? Man, you know, I've been grappling with this quite a bit. And, you know, again, I believe these ideas are, they're not a quick fix. They're just not. And I think anybody who's coming to the table right now saying, I got the answers, I, that's a red flag for me. That, I got all the answers is just much as a red flag for me as, hey, trust me, I'm gonna do the right thing, okay? Don't trust me. Hold me accountable. That's what I want, okay? I want to hear from you, and I want to hear from the community at large. I want to do what I need to do to make sure that I am a receiving force and a selfless representative of what the people need. You know, so many people running for office have a stake in the game, right? I own a bunch of stuff in town. I have a restaurant, and I need this. You know, I'm not knocking any of these people. They're good people, and I know them. They're good-hearted. I'm not saying that, you know, I'm not attacking them. But there's always this sort of, this self-interest involved in the decision-making. I don't have any of those things. I don't, I just don't have them. I'm not doing this out of ego. I'm not doing this because I have a restaurant, or this to protect, or I, you know, have all this property that I want to sell. And like, there's none of that in this for me. I literally am taking instructions from on high. And I know that scares people. Oh, he's a religious zealot. Well, actually, I'm really not, because I don't try to impose anything that I believe on anyone else, but I do live by that code, okay? It's more important for me to keep control of this, because this is all I control, period. I don't control you. I don't control the city. I don't, right? So, if I can be in a space where I can receive, then I'm going to be in a much better position to, to make an assessment and make a decision based on that assessment as a representative of the people. We've come into this idea that, that, you know, because I run for office, I'm running to be your leader, your ruler. That is incorrect. I am not your leader and ruler. Yes, I will lead, but I'm not your leader. I'm your representative. Yes, you're asking me to assess and make the best decisions based on those assessments for all of us. That's all I can do. But if I come at it from the humble perspective, that I am there to be a selfless civil servant, that's what this country was founded on, even though that's been polluted, you know, the ideas have been polluted, it's all about self-government. So, we all need to be involved. Too often, it's like, well, that's what I'm giving, you know, we hired you to go do that. We don't want to show up. But as we're seeing, that tide is turning, because the dissatisfaction, the wave of dissatisfaction has become a tsunami. And as we're seeing in all of these meetings now, people are showing up, they're speaking their minds, and they're, and they're trying to find a way to be involved. You know, somebody asked me earlier today, you know, what would you tell people to do? Just take action. So many of us feel like, oh, I don't know enough. I don't have enough. I don't have enough experience. What am I gonna do? But they know already, right? They're hearing it. They feel it. They know. They're just too afraid.
Well, when you tell somebody to take action, you have to give them some idea of what action it is.
Sure. Go out and vote. 15% of people vote in the midterms. 15%. And then you wonder why you're not getting the people that you want in office, or even something different. I'm not out there pretending I'm a politician, or that I have all the answers, because I don't. I don't have all the answers. What I have is a, is an intuitive drive to take a stand and do things in the name of the people, not in the name of, you know, big business, or whatever it is that, you know, has trapped us in this little box we can't get out of.
Do you have an opponent in this race?
No, I don't. I don't think so. There's eight people running. I suppose I could look at them as my opponents.
How is this race working? There's eight people running, and what, the top couple of them are gonna?
So, there's three seats.
Okay.
From what I understand, the, there's one seat that the individual is not seeking reelection. There's two seats that the individuals are seeking reelection. So, out of those three seats, there are eight people vying for those seats.
Okay. And it'll be the top three?
It'll be the top three. And, and the beautiful thing is, that's what, so somebody has said to me the other night, I, so I play music, and I'll go play some of these open mics around town, because I like that. That's cathartic, right? I'm like, man, I've had a tough day. I'm just gonna go out and play some music, you know? And anyway, I just mentioned it the other night, hey, I'm running for city council. My name's Fritz Moore, and somebody shouted out this other person, yeah, but what about? And I said, you know what? That person is a solid individual. If you choose to vote for them, I think that you should. Just remember that you get three votes for three councilmen. So, if you want to vote for that person, do it. But you can also vote for me here, or you could vote for me here, you know? Or don't vote for me at all. But the most important thing is, is that you go out and vote. So, that's one way you can get involved. Go out and vote. Go to the ballot box. You know, I know a lot of people think that, you know, there's all kinds of issues going on, that, that, you know, well, there's this corruption, and my vote doesn't count, and, you know, well, what about these things from Lindell Symposium? And, you know, you hear it all, right? Everybody's talking about these things. That's great. I'm not saying that, that, I'm not going to slap a fact or a false sticker on any of that. What I'm going to say is, is if you inundate the ballot, the polling place, with your ballots, they're gonna have a really hard time cheating, period, okay? So, the more of you showing up, the more, the less likely it is that there's going to be some sort of cheating. On top of that, I would say, at least in this area, from, I don't really know him personally. I've met him a couple of times. But the feeling that I've gotten from Mr. Rosedale, and what I hear about him is that he's a, he's a pretty stand-up guy. There are questions, yeah. There are questions that I would have in regards to elections and things like that, that I think that, you know, could be easily solved. You know, I just read in the Bee this morning that they're gonna do a recount. Well, I will say recount is not a forensic audit. And if you really want to see if there is any kind of corruption, we have to understand that the machines that we use are proprietary. So, if they're proprietary, there are things and functionalities going on in those machines that we may not be aware of on the surface. And the only way to really find that truth out is to forensically audit the machines. Because, you know, simple things that you see is something like fractional voting, right? Meaning that, that one vote, it doesn't count as one, it counts as a fraction, and then they, you know, that's how the flips happen. And that's been proven, you know, in various other, other cities and counties around the country. So, but again, from what I understand, and I have no reason to distrust Mr. Rosedale and, you know, the county clerk, and from what I understand, he's a stand-up guy, and he's, he's doing his best to make sure that the elections are on the up and up. So, if that's the case, then we really only need to get out and vote, right? That's, that's the only issue. So, beyond that, okay, I voted. I understand, some of us, you know, myself included, like, I don't want to do that. I just worked all day. I'm tired. I've been wiping babies' butts all day. The last thing I'm gonna do is go to a city council meeting, right? The last thing I'm gonna do is go to the commissioner's meeting today. Last thing I'm gonna do is go to the school board meeting. But without that kind of involvement, you don't know what's going on. You don't know what the next, next right action is, because you're not at least taking the first right action, right? It doesn't take that much time to go sit at a council meeting, you know? Even if you go once a month. It happens twice a month, go once a month, you know? Or, or put together a community initiative, so that, you know, everybody's taking turns. You know, my, my campaign right now, that's exactly what we're doing, because I can't be everywhere, as much as I'd love to be, and I have a seven-month-old baby, and a wife who works full-time, you know? Like, I got things to do. So, that's, that's everybody. I got two jobs. I got this. I'm doing, I'm so busy. I'm coaching this team, or whatever it is. So, get together with a group of people, your friends, your, your, your family members, and have one person, you know, on this day, you're designated, you're gonna go. And then the next one, this person's gonna go, and the next one, this one's gonna go. And then once a month, pow-wow, together, and, and discuss what's going on. And then, well, oh, well, maybe we can do this, and maybe we can, you know, come back and, and discuss these things. Involvement doesn't mean that it's 24/7. Involvement can be one hour a month, and, and, you know?
Well, there's so many people that say, we're not political. We don't want to talk politics, which they don't understand that every single thing in their life.
Life is politics.
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, they can't complain about how high the grocery tax is, if they're not going to get, have their say about it, correct?
Yeah, exactly. So, the greatest thing we have is our voice, but nothing ever happens if we don't actually use it. But I will say this, beyond that, one of the greatest things we have beyond this is the fact that God gave us two of these, right? So, when we close this and we open these, we start to receive a lot of what we need to know and hear, and then we can more accurately use this to create change. That's my goal. Listen, receive, understand, and then try to take action in that regard. Again, I don't have all the answers. You know, I'm, I'm still trying to study everything and bone up on where we are. But I'll tell you what, you know, if we want to think, it's just like you hear about people in recovery, right? The term terminal uniqueness is what creates an addict, right? Terminal uniqueness, meaning that I believe I'm so unique that I literally have to do all this stuff, because the world is crazy. Sandpoint is not terminally unique. These problems are the same problems that we are facing countrywide, cities across this country, dealing with the same issues. So, again, are we addressing the real issues?
Are you gonna be able to stand up to the city council that, you know, that are gonna disagree with you?
Well, standing up is not necessarily how I would like to approach it. I don't want to stand up as much as I want to take a stand, right?
Okay, are you gonna be able to vocal enough on this?
Uh, well, vocal is, vocal is something I don't really have a problem with. And they may not like me for that. What I don't want to do is, is come in in a way that is combative, I guess, though, you know, it may be perceived that way. You know, I, I've spent my life, or a good portion of the early part of my life, on the stage. And what you do when you're on the stage is you project. Well, sometimes, when I am passionate about something, I project. And people take that the wrong way. They want me to be Noam Chomsky. They want me to sit here and disseminate all the information to them in a way that is palpable to them and very soft and gentle. That's not me, guys. And that's not what you're gonna get from me. So, this is who I am, and I'm, you know?
Well, as long as you're not afraid to speak.
Not at all.
And you stick to your.
Well, and, and that's key, right? Yeah, sticking to the convictions and understanding. But I will say this as well. I'm also willing to have the discussion, okay? If you're trying to force me to do something, and you're just giving me the, the attitude of, hey, trust me, trust me, this is the right thing, well, no. No, I want to have a discussion. And if that discussion leads to an extension of time, and it doesn't meet your deadline and all that, well, that's so be it. We need to have a discussion. And not only do we need to have a discussion amongst each other in a public forum, but then we need to have additional public forums to discuss it if the public is in disagreement to, to what we're asking them to do. I mean, the LOT 1% is a perfect example of that. It got rammed through the city council. Even the council members were asking, why are we pushing this through so fast? They had to tack on these extra things right at the end, which would suggest that they don't really have a concrete idea of where the money's gonna be spent, which I would suggest could be, make it unconstitutional. So, that's an argument that can be made, and we won't go there. But if somebody wants to discuss that, we may.
We might go there at a future date.
Yeah, exactly. So, because there are, there are constitutional regulations that must be put forth to the public when making decisions like that. So, what are they doing now? They've made the decision to put it on the ballot. Now, it's, it's, it's full-court press to go out there and sell it. But I don't think they're being honest. And they're not gonna like me for that. And they're, they're gonna come after me for that. But they're not being honest. They're not being honest brokers. And that's what people are tired of. They're tired of having these people sit up there and say they're our representatives, and when we say we disagree with what they're doing, they roll their eyes at us and pat us on the head and just say, trust us. That's, that doesn't suffice anymore. The war's at the door. It's real. It's real.
Fritz Moore, candidate for Sandpoint City Council. Thank you, Fritz.
Thank you.